Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bethel, if you're new to us. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing and formally open the public hearing on our proposed anti-fracking waste ordinance. And to begin, if you would please rise and join me in the pleasurable region.
President-elect-elect Senator President-elect-elect Senator President-elect 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 Senator President-elect
Thank you very much. A couple of preliminary announcements. Tonight's hearing is a public hearing, not a town meeting. This is not a meeting of the legislative body, so there'll be no debates, no votes. Nothing formal will be taken. Although this is a formally noted as public hearing, this is the board's opportunity to hear input from the public on the proposal. So, no action to be taken tonight. Under the Town of Bethel Charter, action must be taken, if it is to be taken at all, within 30 days of tonight's date. So, we'll listen to input. And this is not as formal as a planning and zoning public hearing, so it doesn't formally close. People are still free to send in written comments if they would like before the next Board of Selectmen meeting. But again, action will, must be taken within 30 days. If the board doesn't take action, then this basically turns into a pumpkin and we have to start over, one way or the other. So, the board has the option to pass the ordinance as it is, modify it. If it's substantially modified, it might even trigger a second public hearing to gather more input. So, that is, that's what's on tap for tonight. So, we're going to start with public input. And I would like you to please identify yourself with your name and address for the record. And just so you know, if you're, if you're new to this, I see a lot of new faces, which is great. Thank you very much. We are recording. You'll see a little thing above my head, and there's one above yours. So, we're recording both us and you. So, with that, I would like to open the floor for public comments on the proposal.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm out of copies. I made, I made 20, and I'm out of copies. So, if y'all don't mind sharing, or make more.
While we're recording, if you want to, do you want to make more? Do you have, because we're recording the comments anyway, so it'll be on the video. All right, so, yes, sir. And thank you for joining us, Representative Harding. I've been warned that you have another place you have to be.
In Brookfield. It's part of my many hats.
Part of your many hats. So, I would like to yield the floor to you first.
I appreciate that, Mr. Neckerbacher, and thank you so much for having me. So, I'm Stephen Harding. I reside at 21 Brookfield Meadows in Brookfield, but I'm fortunate enough to represent most of the Stony Hill District of Bethel, which is 107th District. This is a particularly important issue. I'm fortunate enough to sit in the Environment Committee in the state legislature. And I know that RehAB is taking a strong effort to ensure that this ban be placed here locally, municipally, in Bethel. It has been done in many other towns. Frankly, I believe that it should be a statewide ban, and that we should move to make it a lot easier, other than individual municipalities, to have to enact the ban themselves. Nevertheless, anything we can do to address this particular issue is critically important. It not only goes down to impacting the environment that we live in, but it also goes down to the health and safety of all the residents, here not only in Bethel, but throughout the entire state. And it should not be an issue that is partisan in any manner. This should be an issue, when it comes down to health and safety, the individuals of this, not only this community, but statewide, this should be a bipartisan effort. And so, I'm speaking on behalf tonight of myself, as State Representative, 107th District, in strong, strong support of this effort. And I would ask the town to, to pass this, this ban. And I also look forward to working, if I have the fortune, opportunity to be up there, to continue to work in Hartford, to make sure this ban is placed statewide. So, thank you so much for giving me the time tonight.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask Representative Harding a question.
Yes.
Do you, let's say that you are re-elected, okay? We're going through this election season right now. Do you plan to introduce-
Your lips are God's ears.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Your lips are God's ears. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Do you plan to introduce a bill for this-
Yes, I have.
-next legislature?
Yes, I have previously, and I'll happily do so again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much for-
Thank you so much for taking the time. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Nancy Ryan, 25 Walnut Hill Road. I'd like to speak in favor of passing the ordinance, because I think, even though it would be great to have a statewide ban and statewide input, it's not happening really quickly. And as we've seen in other states, unfortunately, the states aren't protecting the municipalities. It's a known fact, you can find it in plenty of places. So, having that done locally, to protect our town, protect our area, I think is important. And hopefully, the message will get out there. But yet, as it's not happening in other states, town by town, and it's not happening statewide, states aren't protecting the municipalities, we need to do something to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
RehAB Ali Brennan, 9 Crossville Road. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for having this public hearing, and I want to thank State Representative Steve Harding for helping us make sure that we can pass this ban. It's important, and it's not a partisan issue. We've known that when we handed out, we circulated these petitions, it was from people on both sides of the aisle. So, the timing of this hearing, it comes after seven months of debate between myself and the Board of Selectmen, careful analysis of the ordinance by our town lawyer, conversations with advocacy groups, and the long wait for deep submission of regulations who would still remain overdue. Together, hundreds of residents in Bethel and I led the charge of this ordinance in November 2017, when loopholes in state law left our town exposed to contaminated materials. Yes, there is a state moratorium, but it has a very narrow definition of waste. It prohibits only certain types of hydraulic fracturing waste, from gas wells only. Drilling, storage, and leachate waste from fracked gas wells are not included in the current definition. When our state legislator couldn't do its job to protect public health, property values in our town, and town budgets from costly remediation, the residents took it upon themselves to fix the problem. Since there is no comprehensive state ban, at this time, local ordinances are the only means to restrict these products. And today, we hope to join 51 other towns and cities across the state who have passed this ordinance. Again, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their careful consideration of our proposed ordinance, and I look forward to its passage. Thank you.
Comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott D. Young. I'm here because, I'm a Ridgefield resident. I'm here because your resident, Bill Burke, asked me to attend, and Ridgefield is going through this same process, and I have some comments. I'm a chemical engineer, BS, MS, licensed professional engineer, and I have a small amount of oil and gas experience, none of it fracking. First comment is, additional comment on my background. About nine years ago, when this issue first raised its head, I looked into it, looking for a business opportunity, and frankly, I didn't find one. And then, nothing. And then, it came up in Ridgefield, and I said, "What the heck is Ridgefield doing, getting involved with fracking?" Anyhow, I looked into it, and then got involved. I'm a numbers guy. When a well is fracked, the amount of water that goes in has gone up to, an average reported to be about 9.6 million gallons. It's a lot of water. That's a football field, almost 27 feet deep. About half of that water flows back. There can be nasty stuff in it. No issue there. It is, Bethel and Ridgefield are not at risk. Your waste treatment plants aren't permitted to handle the stuff. The volumes are huge, and it's managed. Some mistakes have been made. Hey, this is our industrial history. All kinds of mistakes have been made along the way. It's prohibitive. It would cost about $500 a load, for a truckload of liquid waste to be transported, and approximately 900 truckloads would come out of one well. I looked it up today, and there are 45 active drilling rigs in Pennsylvania, the nearby state, and no one would transport waste that far for disposal. The ordinance that's proposed, and I did read your entire ordinance, is directed on origin of the material. I can understand why people would be concerned about radiation in their wells. I am. I have never used one pound of fertilizer on my lawn in the 31 years that I've been in Ridgefield. And by the way, I used to work for a fertilizer company. I know what's in it, and there is uranium, there is cadmium, there's nasty stuff. Anyhow, that's not fracking waste. Fracking can have some of those same components in it. There is no definition of what the waste is. That's an enormous problem. How would you know if somebody dumped it? I mean, origin. Many of us wear jewelry. I have a wedding band on. What's the origin? Was this gold mined in South Africa by 10-year-olds? We don't know. Similarly, for precious stones that some people in this room are probably wearing. I'm for protecting the environment. I live on a well. I understand the problem. There is no way that Bethel is at risk. If you pass this ordinance, there are some real problems. How do you, how do you define a violation? Furthermore, no one can certify for asphalt, the origin of the material, that there is no fracking waste in it. There is no, as they say in Latin, de minimis level, small amount, that is not offensive. Every bit of asphalt, I'm going to make a statement, has fracking waste in it. It may be one particle of sand that's harmless, that passed through the refining process. It's waste, because it's not hydrocarbon, it's waste. The refiner that made the asphalt doesn't have control of the wells. He doesn't own them. It's reported that there are 55,000 wells in Pennsylvania. I don't know, I haven't counted them, but it's a big number. And there are other states with more. The material goes through a refinery, it's passed to ONG, Tilcon, and other companies that supply asphalt in our area. They can't certify that. The refiner can't certify that. This is wheel spin. If you define properties, hey, I have no issue. Define a radiation level that's acceptable. Shouldn't be zero, because we've got background radiation in this room. It's a step outside, and you have it. I guess I could go on. I can speak to specific items, and maybe I should shut up. I think it's ill-advised. I think your town potentially takes on liabilities, because you're not going to enforce the ordinance. You're not going to. Now, your wording that does allow for some good faith and best efforts, I looked up best efforts, because I've run into this in contracts in my past. There's a whole 10-page write-up from the Practical Lawyer about best efforts. And best efforts written into a contract presume somebody is not going to succeed, because if they succeeded, who cares what effort they put in, as long as they succeeded? There's write-ups and write-ups. This is loaded with a minefield. Everyone is in favor of protecting the environment. I am. I'll shut up. Ask questions if you're-
Well, no, what I was going to say is, if you have specific, more additional specific comments, please feel free to write up. You can, you can email those in on some, the technical stuff, so-
Sure. Are you objecting to its use? Pardon?
No, I'm, sir, I'm sorry.
Are you objecting to its use? I didn't kind of get what you were talking about.
Okay. I would assume so. Other comments? We're not going to have-
We're not going to get into a debate here.
Yeah, we're going to have one-way comments for the board.
False statements, so.
This is a public hearing.
False statements, so.
Well, that's-
It's a debate.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Michael Spilo. I'm from Greenwich, Connecticut. We passed this ordinance, and I'd like to point out some things that we changed, because there are serious problems with the ordinance, the way it's currently written. I'm, by the way, Vice Chairman of the Greenwich RTM Public Works Committee. The first thing that's a serious problem is the broad nature of the definition. It covers many things that it doesn't really intend to cover and aren't harmful. For example, steel. All steel in the country is recycled. Steel contains a minimum of 40% recycled content, and that's a really good thing. We want our steel recycled. Recycled steel saves a lot of energy. In fact, steel recycling saves enough energy in the U.S. each year to power 20% of the households in the U.S. So, we want to keep recycling steel. The problem with the way this broad definition is written is that some steel from oil and gas wells gets recycled. It's perfectly safe, it's just steel. And when you recycle steel, you melt it down anyway, so any contaminants float to the top or sink to the bottom and get taken out in the process. But all of the recycled steel is all mixed together, you have no way to tell where it comes from. So, the way this ordinance is written, unfortunately, doesn't exclude recycled steel. Another recycled product that it doesn't exclude is water. Some of the water that comes out of the ground, like Mr. DeYoung said, is just water. It's perfectly safe. Some of it is contaminated to some degree and can be cleaned, and some of it is very dirty and should be disposed of. And you can't treat all of that water the same way, and you can't treat water from every gas, oil and gas well in the world the same way. And that's how this ordinance is written, is it treats all oil and gas, all, all the water that comes out of the ground from an oil or gas well, anywhere in the world, it just treats it the same as waste. And this water out west, in California, for instance, some of the wells are tested. The wells that are tested are determined to be contaminated or not contaminated, and the ones that are not contaminated are further sent to treatment plants, cleaned, and then recycled as agricultural water, for instance. Sometimes, it's recycled in manufacturing processes, like making recycled paper. Paper requires a lot of water to make. In any event, the problem is that you need to exclude, from the way this is worded, products that are made with certain types of recycled materials, including recycled asphalt, recycled steel, and recycled water. And that's one of the things that we did in Greenwich, and I'd recommend that you at least consider that. A second major problem with the way this ordinance is written is that the language, if you look, prohibits sale and acquisition of these waste products. And these are financial transactions that often happen remotely and through stock markets. And so, you kind of inadvertently, as unintended consequence, by prohibiting the sale and acquisition of waste, you're prohibiting financial transactions. And so, that's another area that you kind of want to look at and potentially exclude. We did that in Greenwich as well.
Can you do us a favor? Can you send me, can you email to me the changes that you made there?
I will absolutely do that.
Okay.
But I'd like the good people to hear too, if you don't mind. I'll be, I'll be quick. One more-
Yeah, I just don't want to get into the, too much of the technical details. I just want to make sure you get your point across, though.
Understood. The third area that you've already addressed is the certification, but I'd also suggest that, I'll send you changes on that. And the last thing I'd like to say is that you want to be concerned about the penalties and liabilities for homeowners. You don't want somebody who went to Home Depot and bought a bag of salt and didn't really know what was in there, and spread it on the road, to all of a sudden be required to somehow remediate their, their neighbor's driveway. And so, and I'll send you all of those specifics. As a general principle, I think these kinds of things should be handled at the state level, and not on a town-by-town basis, because what happens is, each town has their own little tweaks, and each town is different. And this causes a very, very difficult environment for, for the state. It causes a state to be, a very difficult place to do business. It's much better if there's one ordinance that covers the whole state. So, I would encourage anybody who's working at the state level to, to handle the issue there in a, in a proper manner, and overrule all of the local ordinances that have been passing piece-me-elier in there.
May I get your full name, sorry?
Sure. My name is Michael Spilo. S. like Sam, P. like Peter, I.L.O.
What do you think?
In Greenwich.
Okay. Okay. More comments? So, well, why don't we go, my left to right, so, yes, sir.
My name is Ben Martin. I'm part of 330 Connecticut, a group that represents environmental interests around the state, and I do not live in Bethel. I would just like to say that I think this is a very good ban that should be passed, and I think the majority of the people here in this meeting, which seems like a pretty full meeting that you're not used to, are in favor of the ban, so-
Your short of chairs.
I would first say that, like, it, this is in the public interest, which is shown by the room today, so you should listen to that public interest. And I just want to, just quickly disagree with a couple of the last two speakers, because the last speaker says we shouldn't do a patchwork regulation, but that's the argument that they say against doing state regulation, because we should have a national one. And then, they'll say we shouldn't do it nationally, because we don't have an international one. And so, this is not a reason not to pass a regulation for your town. If the town doesn't want it, the town doesn't want it, and can say it doesn't want it. And he says that these overreaches are unintentional. I would say that they're not unintentional. They are a very good thing, because if you say you don't want fracking waste in your town, you shouldn't want financial interests doing it in other towns, where it's going to harm other towns. And there is one way to prevent fracking waste from coming to Bethel and anywhere else, that's stop fracking. And that is a good message for Bethel to send to the rest of the country, the rest of the state, and the rest of the world. And I think you should pass this as part of the general effort of the state to say, fracking's a bad thing, we should stop it, there way, you don't have to worry about the source of your asphalt or your steel. Thank you.
Okay. More comments? Room this way?
I'm here, I support the ban, period. I don't want to see the stump spread on the roads.
Okay.
Your name and address?
Joel Orton. I live in town here on 4 Rector Street.
Joel Orton.
O-R-T-O-N.
I'm a business owner and a building owner here in town.
Bethel shop in all the lands.
Orton, O-R-T-O-N.
O-R-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am?
I'm Cindy McGuire, 34 Redwood Drive. I'm also here in support of the ban. I don't understand why this is such a contentious issue. This seems to me like a no-brainer, and I'm, it is disturbing to me that we brought this up almost a year ago, and it's taken this long to get to a public hearing. And I want the number-one issue for my representatives to be the health and safety and protection of the constituents. And it's very concerning to me that it's taken this long to get to this point. I, I believe some of the things that were said today were not accurate. If you look at the wording of the bill, we're not banning asphalt, so the comments about asphalt really didn't apply. So, I think we, I think we need to take into account the considerations of the people who actually live here, not all the comments from people outside of town. We're the ones who are, would be exposed to, to the damage.
Thank you very much.
I live in town, and I always have, and I'm against the, I'm like, for the ban as well.
Okay. Your name and address?
Lisette Light.
I'm sorry, can you spell it?
L.A.S.E.T.T. And the last name is Light, L.I.G.H.D.
And your address?
Mountain Orchard Road, Bethel.
Thank you. Okay, more, more comments, yes?
My name's Brooke Smith, 7 Glenwood Drive. Brooke Smith. And I'm against having fracking wastewater get into our water supply. I think water is sort of need, needed for survival, and it's a human right, and we should have access to clean water.
Sorry, did you say Redwood Drive? Gladwood.
My name's Adeleka Pollock, and I'm at 4 Chestnut Street. And I, I have a very long history, and I'm, I'm very with the, with fracking within my family, because I, my family lives in Youngstown, Ohio, and it's right at the edge of the Marcellus Shale. So, when I moved to Connecticut, I, the fracking, in 2004, the fracking industry was just that time moving into the Marcellus Shale at the time. And each and every time I went to go to visit my family over the, over the years, every six months or so, I, I noticed a considerable difference in the water quality each and every single time that I went to go to visit them. And I, and Youngstown, Ohio is certainly a ghost of, of industry in terms of industrial waste, much before I was born, when the steel mills mostly closed down in around 1980s. So, I, our water may have never been all that great to begin with, but it was noticeably, significantly different. And my family's health also changed over the years then, since then. And I have, I cannot say whether or not it was directly affected by the fracking wastewater, but I did notice what, what my family has been going through, and what I've been experiencing, to the point where they needed to get reverse osmosis put into, into their household and everything. So, it's something that, finally, there, one of the high-injection wastewater wells was only four miles from their, their house, and they finally put a moratorium on the wastewater injection well in 2011, when an earthquake had went from, it was felt all the way from Toronto down to West Virginia. And while we're not, we don't have any high-powered wastewater injection wells, I just want to very clearly state the effect of the water quality from the fracking wastewater, and what it has on public health. And me, as a resident of Bethel, I thought that I was safe from this until, until I realized, you know, that we do have these byproducts potentially coming into, into our, into our salt for the roads and that kind of thing. So, I want to make sure that that, that stays out of, of our products. I mean, I prefer things like sand and gravel and that kind of thing to be used to desalt- or to, to melt the ice and that kind of thing on our roads. So, I'm concerned about our community's health. As, as a person within this community, I have a business in this community as well. So, I'm, and I, I teach children, as a teaching artist, I teach children about environmental issues, and I teach them to take care of our, our water and the effects that it has on not just us as human beings, but also the animals and the forest and, and everything. So, thank you so much for, for bringing this ban to the table.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Adeleka Pollock?
A.D.E.L.K.A. And P.O.L.A.K.
Okay. And 4 Chestnut Street. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, more, more comments? Yes?
Jenny Tesar, 97A Chestnut Street. I'd like to address a little different aspects of this than some of the comments we've heard so far. I'd like to start by saying that I'm adamantly opposed to fracking, in part because the process produces massive amounts of wastes. These wastes have to be disposed of, and the fracking industry, hampered in finding waste sites near their wells, is looking for disposal sites, often far from the points of extraction. Fracking companies in Pennsylvania would very much like to ship some of their waste to Connecticut, just as they've been shipping waste to New York State, and were for a while to West Virginia. And there are people within Connecticut who are in favor of allowing the treatment of fracking wastes here. Why do I want these wastes far from my Bethel? First, as has been mentioned, the waste contain radioactive materials, which we all know can increase cancer risks. Second, liquid fracking wastes, the type that could be trucked into Connecticut, contain mysterious chemicals- mysterious chemicals. Thanks to the Howbert loophole in the U.S. Energy Policy Act of 2005, oil and gas companies do not have to disclose what chemicals they use in the fracting process. We do have some clues. According to a 2011 report released by the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Energy and Commerce, between 2005 and 2009, the leading fracting companies used over 2,600 products containing some 750 compounds. More than 650 of these contain chemicals that are known or possible human carcinogens. There have been later studies, doing things a little differently, but also coming up with factors of large numbers of suspect compounds. Now, it's hard to study, though, something, when you don't know what you're studying. And due to the Howbert loophole, it's hard to tell, because they don't have to tell you what's in these compounds. So you don't know what you're studying, and then you don't have the appropriate testing equipment. Treatment, it's hard to treat something if you don't know what you're treating it for. Testing the safety, it's hard to test the safety of treated wastes if you don't know what to test for. Connecticut currently has a moratorium on bringing fracting waste into the state, but this can end at any time. I too would like to see our state legislature handle this matter by passing a comprehensive statewide ban. But action remains stalled, and I see no indication that when the legislature does address the matter, it will do it in a way that favors our health over the industry's money. Meanwhile, forces outside of Connecticut are pushing matters in the wrong direction. In September 2017, the Trump administration allowed oil companies to dump fracting wastes into the Gulf of Mexico. Remember this the next time you buy wild-caught shrimp from the Gulf. This past May, the EPA announced that it was questioning whether rules should be allowed to change, rules should be changed, to allow wastewater from oil and gas wells, including fracting wells, to make its way into America's rivers, streams, lakes, and reservoirs after some treatment. The problem is that treating these wastes is tricky, because, as I pointed out, the industry can keep secret which chemicals are being used. This means that none of us knows what chemicals to test for and then remove, and no one knows what chemicals would be going into our rivers and streams and reservoirs. So how can anyone be sure that produced water, this is the industry term for fracting water that has been treated, is safe for us to drink, swim in, bathe in? Are there sewer treatment plants in Connecticut capable of handling these wastes? I don't think so. Would you like to see local plants retrofitted to handle these wastes? Would you trust the healthfulness of water that leaves the plants? Would you like to see this produced water used on our vegetable gardens, our farms, our apple orchards? Would you like to see construction of such wastewater treatment plants along the I-84 corridor, upping highway traffic, hundreds of trucks a day, with attendant spills and accidents, and product being leached onto Bethel grounds? I would not. As has been said, 51 communities have passed bans on fracting wastes, and I feel it's important that the Bethel community join its neighboring communities in trying to do whatever is possible to keep fracting waste out of our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Promin, 4 Chestnut Street. I'm in favor of this ban for many, many reasons. I've also lived on the Marcella Shale, I've lived in the Pittsburgh area, I have many friends still down there. And what the water issues down there is, is horrible. These companies are bringing in tankers of water for people whose land is unsellable now, because their water is undrinkable, all while claiming no liability whatsoever, yet still providing 1,500 gallons a week or a month, depending on the, the household. We don't know what's in these wells, as you said. We don't know, because their chemical mixtures are proprietary. We don't know what the cumulative effect of these chemicals are, and why would you allow that without knowing that? It's, it's our water system. Why risk that? It's, you know, our kids bathe in it, we bathe in it, we drink it. And until we know those answers, yeah, we should put a ban in. And if, for no other reason than to send the state a message that we want action on this on a state level. I mean, if that's the least that happens from this ban, then that would be a good thing. We're showing, as a community, as residents of Connecticut, that this is what we want. And that helps, because it is a democracy theoretically, and we still are allowed to demonstrate our will as a community. My father ran a municipality in Long Island for over 20 years. Salinization of roadways from salt was bad enough, he actually eliminated salt from his, his mixtures, and ran into some fights with the town over it, but as the head of Public Works, he did a lot of good for the town, and it cost the town a lot less money in terms of vegetation maintenance, the trees were healthier, the, the roads were less corroded, the cars were less corroded. It was a benefit to the community, so it's something we should pay attention to, what we put on our roads, and that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what's your lesson?
Prom, P-E-R-L-M-A-N.
Karen Foster, now Bynwood Road. I grew up in southwest New Hampshire, I have family still living there, and dealing with the effects of fracking, so I'd just corroborate what a young lady from Youngstown and the mayor of Pittsburgh said, that it's something that I wanna be far away from, and that's why I'm here. When I heard the word fracking, I'm here, because I don't want it anywhere near me, and I don't want the waste anywhere near us. Obviously, we all know all the bad things about it. If the state is not acting a ban, it's a good idea that we are. I'm also in favor of collaborating with other towns that have already enacted their bans, let's see what their wording is like, let's make sure that we're not missing anything, there are no loopholes that they've already found, or whatever, and I think that's just a good idea to collaborate. If we can get many towns to come up with the same ordinances, then it makes it easy for the state to just say, okay, we'll take what you got.
Thank you.
Karen, what's your address?
9 Bynwood Road, B-I-R-N-A-M.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Betty.
Betty Hurgen, 83th and Plain Street. I just wanna, I just feel that it's good to know that the town of Bethel is going forward and making, taking a big step forward with an ordinance, whether it's written with this language, or something added, or deleted, whatever. At least it's something, instead of sitting back and waiting till a disaster happens, and then it's too late. It's something. Might not be perfect, but what is?
Thank you.
Ma'am, what is my, what is, what was her name?
Betty Hurgen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Malte Klesen.
I'm sorry?
Malte Klesen, it's M-A-L-T-E-K-L-P-S-N, at number 8B Colley Avenue. I'd like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. I believe that it closes a lot of loopholes that the state legislation has currently. I do not see how it actually bans us from using materials that we do want in our community, like pavement, or any kind of building materials that are not based on the described, included here in the definitions, waste that comes from hydraulic fracking, and so on. So I do think it actually very specifically bans the waste material from hydraulic fracking that we do not want in our community. And, yes, a step in the right direction, it will be number 52, or 51, whichever way you count of towns in Connecticut that pass such a ban, and will send the right message on state level that it is needed also on my level.
Right. Thank you very much. Any, any other additional comments? Yes?
Susan Funchieri, B-U-C-C-I-E-R-I, 18 Barclay. I think it's a no-brainer to have a ban. There's a, I mean, they call it waste. Waste is waste. It wouldn't, it's not called pure, it's not called anything else other than waste, and it's waste. And, you know, I used to work for a fuel desulfurization company years ago, back in the 70s, and when the Reagan administration came along, they completely deregulated all the flue gas in the country, that was back in the 70s, and we're worse off for it now. And it put an entire industry that was promoting clean air and clean water and a clean environment. And I think this is a big picture that we have to fight, not just a little thing here and a little thing there, it's the entire fight for the environment that we need to protect.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name for me? Thank you. Yes?
James Nadeau, 14 Countryway. I just wanna thank you guys for, for listening to the concerns of the public, everybody who's worked on this project so far. I do hope that we can pass this ban as it's written. This is, I know it's been discussed and dissected and reviewed by lawyers, advocacy groups, persons in town for over seven months now, so I'm hoping that we can pass it as it is. I think this is a great first step for our town, and I hope we can be the 52nd town in Connecticut to pass legislation like this.
Right, other comments? Yes?
Danielle Magrel, 9 Lime Kiln Court. I'm sorry, what? 9 Lime Kiln Court. Just briefly wanted to say that I'm definitely in support of this ban, and I do think that it's very naive to think that the fracking industry wouldn't want to send waste here if we don't block them from doing so, because when we're talking about energy corporations, we're talking about money, and if everyone else blocks them from depositing the waste in those other townships, of course, it's going to come our way.
Thank you. More comments? More comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, well, we will close for now, and before I end this hearing, I would just like to remind you that we, you can, you're free to send any comments into the First Selectman's office. You can find the email link on our website, it's firstselectman@bethel-CT.gov. And I wanna thank you all for coming out, and in case you have nothing else to do tonight, you're welcome to stay for the Board of Selectmen meeting, and, you know, for your entertainment. And that will begin at about five or 10 minutes after, after we're done with this. So I'll close this hearing, and thank you very much for attending tonight, and thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Just always wanted to meet, I'm Joel, Joel Wood, I'm a book star, Carol Losas. Oh, oh, yeah, I'm over there every night. Same with you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for hosting this, I appreciate it.
Take care, kind sir. Thank you very much. You need to ban this thing. As far as the way it's written, I really don't know. I, it's up to that, that's what you have to deal with. But what that guy said made sense, though, he'll probably send you some blurbs.